All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Portsmouth School Committee Meeting of September 23rd. If you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for our troops in harm's way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of Kentucky. One mission under God, in the Bible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, nice to be back. As you may have known or noticed, hopefully somebody did. We did not have a meeting the first Tuesday of, or second Tuesday of this month, as the agenda just didn't really justify it. Let the record reflect that everybody is here tonight and present. In case of emergency, we have two exit doors here, one here in the back, and we meet over at the school admin building and await further instructions. I'd like to point out for school committee members that, a reminder that our workshop is this Thursday at 9:00 AM. I know everybody hates the word homework, but there is some homework in the backup. Dr. Viveras has put together a PowerPoint. I shared a PowerPoint from Mario Carreno. He also has a little YouTube thing there. Ms. Keon has a backup document there. Trying to think if we have anything else. So just check the folder for backup and if you guys could look at it before the meeting, I think that'll make us stay on time because we're trying to crunch a lot into a very short period of time there. And did you get an answer to your question about food allergies for lunch and everything from everybody? So if you didn't... If you didn't see the email about food allergies, please, please respond to that.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have heard that our PHS liaisons have been appointed and they will be joining us in October. And they've got a system with who's going to come and who's in the backup. So I'm looking forward to hearing all of their reports, but we do not have them on the agenda for tonight. The second announcement is that the National School Board Conference is taking place April 10 through 12, 2026 this year, in San Antonio. This is something that we have sent one to two members to on occasion when it was in Boston. I think a couple, more than a couple of people went. The last one was in New Orleans. And actually, I was very skeptical, but it was, I thought it was pretty worthwhile. So if anybody looks at their schedule and says they can carve out that time to go to San Antonio, it's...
Just to clarify, is that budget like set for, like, I just want to clarify if teachers would be open to that?
No, this is a, this is not for, this is for school committee, school. You have to be a school committee or admin to go to this, so. It's not really, and it really probably wouldn't be all that useful.
I'm just saying, like, could I defer the funding that, for other professional development of staff?
Well, the idea is that not everybody, we can't afford to send everybody. So what we have done is we've said, because school committee members are required to have six hours of professional development by law per year, we've said, if there's a school committee member that, you know, expresses interest in it, then every couple of years, we can maybe send one or two because it's not cheap. So if we don't go, then the money doesn't get spent, which can be used for something else. That's, it's not like everybody has a budget, if that makes sense. And we didn't have any executive session tonight, so no, no report out on that. Moving on to, but I would say one more thing on the school board conference. They have discounts for early registration fees. So one is November and one is December. So we really have to commit one way or the other if people are going to go, or want to go, like, that time. We don't have to have the actual name, but we have to say we're sending one or we're sending two. And then Dr. Viveras would also carve time out of her schedule to attend that as well with whoever ends up going, if they go. But we don't have to go. Okay, so that's, just keep that in mind. Subcommittee updates, the only subcommittee that's met has been the District Building Committee, which Mr. Fox and I attended. That was Wednesday, September 17th. I have the handouts here for people. The good news is bathrooms, everything, projects, pretty well done. They have, of course, a punch list and it looks like we have about $100,000 under budget, which can be used to expand on the projects that were part of the bond. Can't be put to something new, but it could be done with the bond projects. And so they're going to look into making sure everything gets tied up with the middle school bathrooms, our last outstanding project, any changes. But that is really good news, folks. We came in under budget, on time, all complete, knock wood, for the bond project. So big kudos to admin team, all the people who worked on it. I know Mr. Masterson was juggling schedules to get everybody to work on that or get everybody a opportunity to go to the bathroom, I should say, at the middle school. But nicely done, nicely done. And there's some pictures here if you want, so passing that there. Mr. Fox, did you want to add anything to that?
Nothing really. I think, I think you covered most of it. I think I'm looking forward to the capital plan for the next go around. We did discuss that at that meeting, so I'm looking forward to seeing that report.
Absolutely, my omission. We also discussed stage one and stage two and a timeline for that as well. Okay, now, moving on to our favorite part of the evening. We have recognitions. Ms. Keon, would you please join Dr. Viveras down in front? As I mentioned, school committee members are required to do six hours of professional development. And Ms. Keon has gone above and beyond and completed the Rias Leadership Academy, which is a total of 15 hours that covers a variety of topics from collective bargaining, roles and responsibilities, school finance, strategic planning, and we have a lovely certificate to give to her. Are you planning on taking a photo for the website? So round of applause, congratulations. And I would encourage, if you haven't done it, it's kind of a one-time thing. It's not like you do it every year. You can do it online, right? I mean, there's online classes to do and at your leisure, so I'll pass this around this way to start. Encourage new members to do that. Did you find it useful? Good. Okay, and now, another wonderful event, Dr. Viveras.
Excellent, thank you. Good evening, everyone. So this evening, we're starting a new recognition for our students, which we're calling our Student Spotlight. This will provide us with an opportunity to celebrate students who are accomplishing special achievements in and out of the classroom. More information on how the community can nominate a student for our spotlight will be shared with families in this month's superintendent's memo. Today, we're celebrating 11th grader Kelsey Borden. Kelsey has written and published, and I'm going to just send one around, published the book Cloud's Great Adventure. This book, which was started as a high school class assignment, showcases Kelsey's belief that everyone has something to offer the world by taking readers on a journey through the sky. This book can be found on Amazon and a copy will be available, a signed copy will be available at both of our elementary schools. Congratulations, Kelsey. We're so proud of you. Very proud of you.
I just really want to commend you for going above and beyond. That's, that's really wonderful. You're a published author and not even out of high school. I mean, not many students can put that on their college application, so.
Did you do the illustrations too?
So you did do it though, then? I mean, you created it, so. That's great. That's really great. Well, if, you're more than welcome to stay for the whole meeting if you'd like. If you would like to leave at any point, don't feel awkward because that's totally fine with recognitions. That's right. Is there going to, and you're welcome. Is there going to be a book too? Is there going to be a book too? All right, have a good evening. Okay, public comment. I believe we have some tonight. So we now have to read this public comment statement. Per school committee policy BED, meeting procedures bylaws during public comment portion of the agenda, members of the public may comment on any topic related to the schools. For any public comment, individuals must first be recognized by their chair, which I just did, state your name and address for the record, and may comment for up to two minutes. If public comment pertains to an item not on the agenda, the committee will listen but not comment, and any follow-up will be coming from the superintendent or designated. Could you please state your name and address for the record? Is the microphone on, green?
Nope, there we go. Daniela Abbott, 52 Ladera Avenue. Good evening. I did send you all a letter that was a little bit longer than this. I consolidated my remarks to be respectful of your time, but I'm just going to read them so that I can be concise. I'm here tonight to express my strong concern about the proposed phase-out of the Portuguese program at Portsmouth High School. While I understand that tough choices must be made, eliminating Portuguese would be a step backward for both our students and our community. Portuguese is more than just a class. For many families in Portsmouth and across Rhode Island, it is a connection to our heritage and our town's history. Over 95,000 Rhode Islanders identify as Portuguese or of Portuguese-speaking descent, and nearly 30,000 households use Portuguese as their primary non-English language. I'll add that that is the second greatest number after Spanish. Offering Portuguese shows that Portsmouth values and affirms this identity. Just as importantly, having at least three language options makes our district stronger. High-performing districts like East Greenwich, Barrington, and North Kingstown all offer three or more languages. This variety gives students more choice, supports heritage learners, and prepares graduates for a globally connected world. And the research is clear. Bilingual students are better problem solvers, stronger academically, and more adaptable in college and careers. By preserving Portuguese, we're giving students skills that are both practical and culturally meaningful. Instead of phasing out the program, I urge you to consider alternatives. Reintroducing Portuguese at the middle school level to build a pipeline, offering introductory programs at the elementary level, exploring shared instruction or hybrid models, and actively promoting the cultural and career value of the program. In closing, I respectfully ask that you consider maintaining a minimum of three-world language offerings at Portsmouth High School, including Portuguese. This would strengthen our curriculum, align us with top districts, and honor the heritage that makes our community unique. So thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. As you know, it's not on the agenda tonight, but I'll come back around budget time.
I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. All right, superintendent's update, Dr. Viveras.
Sure, thank you. We're going to go ahead and start with the personnel update. So all personnel updates are displayed on the screen for your review. I am pleased to welcome 17 new hires, all of whom are already in their positions. We also have 21 coaching assignments, all made earlier in September, so there were no delays with fall coaching. Unfortunately, we have two resignations this evening, which is always disappointing. One resignation happened quickly with a new GSA hire. The other is a tenured employee, Dave Dyson, who has been watching over our Hathaway community for several years as our security specialist. He will be greatly missed. Currently, we have three open positions that we're looking to fill. A clerical B in our IT department, an RBT at the middle school, and a security specialist at Hathaway. Anyone interested in any of these positions can find the posting on SchoolSpring or can reach out to my office and we could share the details. Hey. This is just loading, apologies. All right, for our district update. So tonight, I'm going to be providing you with just an overview of our, this is, I apologize, for some reason, this is not opening on my end. Here we go. Try that one more time. There's just a delay on my computer. It's gone. Oh, all right. Yeah, I'm not sure. Buffering, just living in the world of buffering. Let's see here. Just came up, perfect. All right.
Good job, sheer.
All he needed to do was just get a little bit closer to me. All right, so the first few weeks of school have been filled with a joy of learning. Our students and staff are off to an incredible start, and I'm excited to share these updates. So this first slide here just highlights how smooth of a transition we had to see our students back in school. Our K, 5th and 9th grade students, along with all new students, came in on the first day, giving them a chance to get comfortable in their new grade and explore the building. The rest of the Portsmouth Patriots joined the next day, which helped make the transition smooth for everyone. It was a great way to start off our school year. At our elementary schools, we kicked off the year with Start With Hello Week, a program focused on building connections and creating welcoming, inclusive school communities. During the week, students participated in activities that encouraged friendship, kindness, and reaching out to others who may feel left out. It's a great way to set a positive tone for the school year and help every student feel seen and valued. It's been wonderful connecting with families at our back-to-school events across the district. At the elementary schools, open house and ice cream socials included fun activities like scavenger hunts, helping students and families get to know the school. Middle school events were a bit more structured with reviews of expectations, curriculum, support programs, introductions to the UAs and class visits. The middle school split their events over two nights, grades five and six one evening and grade seven and eight the next. The high school open house hasn't happened yet. It's coming up this Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00. I really enjoyed my time in the schools, being able to connect with familiar faces and new families. The high school's annual Fall Club Fair was held on Friday, September 19th, in the old gym, showcasing over 50 clubs and giving students the chance to explore activities that sparked their interests. It was a great way to encourage students to get involved and find their community at school. At our middle school, a Patriot Pride bulletin board welcomes all new Patriots, including students and staff, helping everyone feel connected and part of our middle school family. I've been excited to share that our five-year capital projects are complete, as we said earlier, and on time, on budget. As we begin planning the next five-year capital plan, we want to keep that momentum going. At open house events, I've been talking to families about sharing their ideas and feedback. The QR code on the screen links to a short survey, so everyone can have their voice heard. I'll also include this link in my September memo to ensure all families have a chance to participate in the survey. We'll be hosting a community forum in early November with both in-person and virtual options for participation. More information about the forum will be shared at our October meeting. Now for some construction updates. Our middle school bathroom projects are now officially complete, with only a small punch list of items identified during the final walkthroughs. At the high school, the roof project is moving into what I hope are its final stages. Work continues both at the front of the building and on the last areas needing plastering indoors. While weather and product backwaters have caused some delays, the project is on track to be completed by the end of this month. Apple Crunch Day will take place on October 21st as part of the Farm to School Month. This fun event is being hosted by Chartwells and will highlight the importance of healthy eating, support our local farms, and bring students and staff together to enjoy fresh, local apples. Information on this event will be distributed to families when the event gets closer. My final update for this evening is a save the date for the annual Breakfast for School Wellness Leaders. That will happen on Thursday, October 16th. This breakfast is always an excellent opportunity for us to connect with leaders across the state and to strengthen our partnership with the Rhode Island Healthy Schools Coalition. This year is especially exciting for Portsmouth as our very own HR Director Kim McWire will be presenting on the work our district has done and continues to do to support our staff and build culture of wellness throughout the community. So that'll be exciting. This concludes my district updates.
Wonderful. Any questions?
The apple crunch, is that pie?
It's not pie, it's just apples, but we'd love to see you there.
If it doesn't have sugar.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on, you're still up, Dr. Viveras?
I am. So we're going to go right into our enrollment update. So tonight, I'm going to be providing you with an overview of our current enrollment data and making comparisons to our enrollment numbers from last year. This first slide provides us with an overview of our elementary enrollment data. This fall, we have 436 students enrolled at Hathaway and 307 students enrolled at Melville, with our current elementary enrollment at 743 students. This is up 16 students from last year. At our middle school, we have 596 students enrolled. This is a decrease of nine students from last year. At high school, we have 763 students enrolled. This is a decrease of 23 students from last year. This year, we have 76 students who are considered out-of-district placements. That's a decrease of 15 students from last year. This includes students who are enrolled in charter schools, regional schools such as NACTAC and the Met, homeschool programs or treatment programs, which are overseen by our Student Services Department. This number does not include our students who attend out-of-district CTE programs.
Does not.
As those students are considered, do not report in our enrollment data. Looking at the district as a whole, we have a current enrollment of 2,178 students. This is a decrease of 31 students from last year. When looking at the past three years, our enrollment is slightly higher by 25 students. This school year, we have five Prudence Island students joining us and 76 Little Compton students. 21 freshmen, 17 sophomores, 25 juniors, and 13 seniors. We also have one Middletown family who is paying to tuition their child into our middle school. Our homeschool student numbers went from 39 last year to 42 students this year. This slide provides us with our incoming out-of-district enrollment numbers for our CTE programs. Since 2019, we've increased our enrollment each year. This year, we have, so this year, we have 78 students enrolled, and this is an increase, again, of 43 students. Our sending districts include Newport, Middletown, Tiverton, Bristol Warren. As you can see, Tiverton is our highest sending district with 44 students attending our CTE programs, followed by Bristol Warren's 15, Middletown 12, and Newport with seven. Including our Portsmouth and Little Compton students, this brings our total CTE enrollment at the high school to 290 students that are participating in our CTE academies, which is an excellent number. This final slide is a breakdown of Portsmouth students who are attending out-of-district CTE and charter programs along with their program of study. This year, we have 21 students attending Newport Area Career and Technical Center at Rogers. 16 of those students are full-time students, and we still have five part-time students remaining. Next month, we're going to be providing you with a very detailed presentation on our current CTE programs and plans for future CTEs. That concludes our enrollment presentation. Questions?
So for the Kingston Hill Academy and Compass, so is that an elementary school charter? Can any out-of-district students come to our district, like, if they're choosing to go to that elementary?
Our district isn't considered a charter. A charter is open too.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions?
Thank you. Can we put that presentation under the workshop backup too, under enrollment? I think that'd be useful. When, when in the year, I know you say it's still kind of early to get a handle on, you know, kind of enrollment settling down because students still come in, military, et cetera. When, when do you sort of feel is the best time to sort of say, this really is the district?
I would say around November.
November.
And then around end of April, beginning of May, we start to see families starting to disenroll, especially our military families.
Right, as they're moving on to their next duty station.
Yeah, but about November.
What percentage of Portsmouth students are associated with either the military, foreign military? I mean, I'm thinking mainly like the naval base, so it could be State Department or other coming in for those programs. They're temporary, basically.
Yeah, our most recent percentage, and Dr. Heath, you were a part of developing that grant with us, but we were at around 15%. Yeah, we were around 15%.
Yeah. Do you think that, that that group alone really accounts for some of the variation that we see from like year to year, this 10 or 20? Yeah, I do too, actually. Okay, so 15%.
Great.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm sorry, Ms. McDate.
There we go. In the past, we've talked about predictions for the population in this area and other factors determining enrollment. What's the outlook at this point going forward?
Currently, with the work that we're doing with our stage-two submission, we're going to have a very detailed, yeah. So I'll be able to share out on that when that information is available.
They, they talked about that at the District Building Committee. When, when is that demographic study coming to us?
I think that they'll be reporting out on it.
October?
I believe November.
November, okay.
This might be something everybody believes, but if, if we had more affordable housing here in Portsmouth, we'd have a lot more students. NOAA, I don't know where it stands with all the new Defense Department changes and so forth, but NOAA was supposed to add 1,000 employees to the area. The families have to live somewhere. I don't know where, what's available in Portsmouth. And right near me, between the senior center, which is going to have, I think, 52 affordable housing units, and then there's might be two new buildings going near me, which will be another 45, I think, combined. There's almost 100, will be 100, I think, affordable housing units. That probably includes some number of kids, I would think.
That would be wonderful.
Yeah, so, but I just don't, I don't know, you know, if many kids will be in those units. But certainly, that would add to the potential enrollment. And I don't know if that could, would even be considered. It's the NEZDEK, isn't it? NEZDEK that those are?
Yep, and we have not received a report yet this, we haven't received a NEZDEK report yet this year. But interestingly enough, looking at the NEZDEK report hasn't always been valuable to us because they've made projections that we haven't actually fallen, like, fallen in line with.
Right. Yeah, I think it's useless.
We are seeing, I will say, when I look at our kindergarten and first grade, when I look at our kindergarten and first grade numbers, we are... when I look at our kindergarten and first grade numbers, we are seeing a bit of a decline. But then we get this surge in, in second grade and third grade this year, which is, is just interesting, and there are a lot of military families coming into us in those two grades. So I just really think it depends. That's what makes our district unique, for sure.
That's the other thing, the military is increasing its training capacity at the base. I mean, they're, they move more training facilities there. So the potential is there for, I think, increasing enrollment beyond what we can foresee right now. And I don't think even Nezdek would pick up much of this stuff.
Right.
All right, thank you very much. Can I have a motion, please, for approval of school committee minutes?
I move that we approve the school committee meeting minutes of.
August twenty-sixth?
August twenty-sixth.
And executive.
And the executive. And the executive session minutes of August twenty-sixth.
Second.
Any changes or corrections? All in favor? Any? You went there, but you can still, you can still vote for him if you want. So all in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero. Motion for the consent agenda?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero.
I move for discussion and action on the Portsmouth High School band field trip to Washington DC contingent upon raising sufficient funds with the trip.
Second.
I see Mr. Roush is here. Did you want to talk on that, or? We can just vote for it. The proposal's in the back, and we just have to put contention upon raising funds so that we don't end up approving something that we end up having to pay for. So I would be in favor.
Absolutely. I was just curious, you're not participating in a parade. This is just like a, a trip to DC with the band, and the band's going to do a performance at the. Well, I forget where.
Right, we, there is no parade. We normally would do the Cherry Blossom Parade, which we've had in the past. But they're, they changed their, their little bands on two hundred in size. So we're doing a stand-up performance in front of the Lincoln Memorial. For reflecting pools.
Nice.
Thirty-minute program with the band color guards, do the stand-up in-uniform performance. The banner and everything, do a combination of patriotic and pop and military service songs. That will be something to work on, Si engine.
Yeah, I think it's a great trip for the kids.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero. Awesome. Look forward to hearing the report from it. Mr. Duro, can we receive the reports on revenues expenditures for fiscal year ending in June thirty, two thousand twenty-five, unaudited?
Yes, so as a disclaimer, I, I just want to note that the financial reports you have are unaudited. The audit's in process and will be done before the end of December. But I'm fairly confident there won't be any changes or adjustments that haven't been that, you know, far back as I can remember. For the full year, the school department ended with a small net surplus of three hundred and five thousand dollars or zero point six eight percent of budget. This was driven by favorable revenue receipts, offset by an expenditure overage. Revenues were favorable to budget by four hundred and sixty-one thousand or one point zero three percent. Two unbudgeted one-time items drove that favorability. First, the district received an unexpected two hundred fifty thousand dollar equity distribution related to the liquidation of the East Bay Education Collaborative's assets, including from the sale of their admin building. During the time the budget was repaired, no one had any idea that EBEC had financial issues and would close down during the year. Second, under state law, state group home aid is subject to an annual adjustment, mid-year annual adjustment based on a group home bed count conducted by DCYF each December. Unbeknownst to us, DCF added twelve additional licensed beds at Boystown subsequent to last December's bed count. This resulted in the department receiving an additional two hundred and four thousand dollars of group home aid in FY twenty-five. In the past, when this has happened, and it has happened at least two other times that I'm aware of, Riot has notified us of that, so we were aware of it. This year, that for some reason, they did not. And so we were surprised when that, those funds showed up. On the expenditure side, expenditures were over budget by a hundred and fifty-six thousand or zero point three five percent, primarily related to transportation and electricity costs coming in higher than budget. If there are any specific line items or questions, I'm happy to do my best to answer them.
I, I have three. On line item five-five-one-one-one, which is coming down a bit, that's transportation, that's one you just highlighted here. We have a contract that, right there. That's right, that's the one that's almost three hundred thousand dollars over budget. We have a contract which sets out our costs for district busing, and I'm assuming that three hundred thousand isn't related to the contract. That's all statewide transportation costs. Is that what that is? Or is that something?
It, it's a combination, so I can give you some of the big, the big drivers. So, for example, we had an unbudgeted student enroll in a Tiverton CTE program. We needed to provide transportation. That cost fifty-five thousand dollars. He was the only student going there. We had to have a van for that. That was unbudgeted. We also had, if you remember, we had budgeted to have our life skills program outsourced to EBEC before EBEC liquidated. Bringing that back in-house required us to have life skills transportation, which was unbudgeted in over a hundred thousand dollars. And then statewide transportation in total was over budget by ninety-one thousand. That includes both special ed and also regular ed, which encompasses homeless and foster students. So those are the main drivers. It was not the regular twenty-one buses that you see out every day driving to our schools.
Have we, have we accommodated in a different fashion that CTE student going to Tiverton this year?
Graduated. And just so you all know, our contract does end with first student at the end of this fiscal year, and we've already sort of started the process of putting it out on RFP for that.
Interesting. You need a, like?
They're only two bus companies?
No, there's, there's, there's more. Ocean State, First Student, Amarals around. So there's kind of three big ones, I think, that kind of handled state.
You finished?
No, I have two more questions, but is it on the transportation?
No, it's on electricity.
That's my next one. Five-six-two-one-five, electricity. So.
Yep.
I mean, I think every Rhode Islander knows that electricity price skyrocketed this year.
Yep.
And I just was curious, is that ninety-six thousand due to that rise in kind of costs, or is that anything to do with the HVAC changes we made to the elementary schools?
So, so I think it's, it's going to be a couple of things, two of those and a third. So, yes, we are locked in on the supply side. We have a multi-year contract, so there's, so there's the town, so we're able to budget for the rate for supply. But what happened to us and really hurt us was there was a twenty-five percent increase in Rhode Island Energy's distribution cost per kilowatt hour. So we now pay more per kilo, per kilowatt hour for distribution of electricity than we do for the actual electricity itself. We, we did see at Melville a fifty-five percent increase in energy usage because of the new HVAC system. A little more than we thought. It's doing both heating and cooling now, unless the temperature gets below, I believe, thirty-five degrees. We did see some savings, if you look at fifty-six-two-on-one natural gas. There is some savings there. A lot of, all of that and more actually was from Melville because now we're not using as much natural gas for heating because we're using electricity, because there are heat pumps. And then the last thing that I've been super frustrated with is that we, we've been having a lot of issues with Rhode Island Energy's invoicing and accuracy. So I'll give you like two examples of that, just so you know what we're dealing with. So when we did the Hathaway HVAC system, and the reason why I didn't tell you what the increase in energy there is, I have not had an actual invoice in over a year for that, for that account. So, and I've been working with Rhode Island Energy on this constantly.
Does that mean we're going to get a bill for like five hundred thousand dollars at this point?
Yeah, it does. So, but we've been, we're counting for it, but, so I'm just letting you know the frustration we have. So for five months, we didn't receive a bill at all, until I called, and then they started sending us bills. And they're sending us bills now for four hundred kilowatt hours per month. This building should have fifteen to twenty thousand kilowatt hours per month. So I've, I've, I've been dealing with them, they have a Gnom's Budman that works with towns and schools, and I've been assured that they're going to go back and redo all of our bills for the last twelve months. So that, that's one example. Second example was we received an invoice from Melville for one month, which typically is maybe ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars. It was nine hundred thousand dollars. So clearly.
Electric bill was high.
Yeah. So clearly, that was wrong. They blamed it on basically technician error, reading, reading the, you know, the information coming out of the system. All I would say, I, you know, I'm not saying the bills are wrong, because we look at them, there were a lot of eyes on this, we spent a lot of time. But I would highly recommend that you look very closely at your own bills. I don't know if you saw on the news, State of Rhode Island did an audit because they saw a bunch of weird things happening with their bills, and they settled on a two million dollar payback, that they'd been overcharged by two million dollars.
Wow.
You have to put your.
A donation to us? You know, with regard to?
I don't know if we're making one to them or they're making one to us.
Well, in the Hathaway, but anyway, my question on, like, you finished?
Go ahead.
My question on electricity is, are we able to segregate the, the new gym? And, and the air conditioning that's used during the summer, do we have, do we get a separate bill? Because I think we even went.
We do.
We went a period, even with the gym, where we weren't getting a bill.
We went, yeah, again, if I hadn't called them, I'm not sure we would ever have gotten a bill, right? Maybe five years from now, they would have sent us like a half million dollar bill.
Why'd you call them?
Because they, someday, they're going to figure it out someday, right? Someday that that bill's going to come due, so.
The, um. So, so anyways, so is that a significant number?
Not, no, it's not a significant number. I don't know off the top of my head, but it's, it's not like Hathaway and Melville.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, because, and then a follow-on question is, when many people advocated that we install air conditioning, particularly basketball, the youth, or whatever the organization is, Booster Club, I guess it was. They said, well, you, we can make, we can make money off renting out the gym. Have we been renting out the gym with any degree of success?
I believe we have. Honestly, I'm not that close to the rental process. That's our operations manager handles that. But my anecdote, I believe, yes, we have been renting it out quite a bit.
So, one last question, then a general question. Five-three-four-one-four?
Yes, so that is our medical claims provider. So the district, along with probably just about every other, other district in the state, use, use companies, ours is Relay Health to process and submit our Medicaid reimbursement claims.
Oh, okay.
They are paid.
Not employees, that's Medicaid reimbursement?
Yes, and so what it is, is Relay Health submits the claims to us, and they get paid as a percentage of the claims. So if you look at our revenue, you'll notice that our Medicaid billings this year were way over budget. And so our, our fees for that were way over budget as well.
Bounces out. So, okay, that answers my, my one question on that. My, my general question is, do we have something to be concerned about this year? With electricity and transportation and not, don't worry about the medical claims? Because obviously, it'll be lower if we get lower revenue and higher, we get higher, but.
As far as transportation goes, it's, it's a little early to tell. I, I tend to say no. I know that we don't have the same amount of life skills midday driving. So I think we've actually even eliminated that completely, so I think that, that'll be good. I haven't seen billings yet because we haven't had a full month for statewide. But I also know that we don't have the Tiverton students, so there are some, some things I feel more confident that we're not going to have the same type of issue for transportation, for electricity. I, I really don't know. Again, it's been over a year. I don't have a bill for one of the schools. I'm hoping that we're not going to see more increases in distribution. I'm hearing we may see reductions. I, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure. It's been the most, for the last several, I'd say, ever since the wind turbine came in and that whole thing came in with the whole, the municipal credits that the electrical line, budgeting, invoicing, the whole thing has been so complicated for what you would imagine would just be a utility bill that comes in and you pay it. It's not that. It's so much more complicated.
Wow.
Isn't that amazing that we have our issues? And we're just one small district in the state, and as you pointed out, many residential customers are probably experiencing unjustified bills. I mean, it seems like the whole thing is just really screwed up. And, you know.
Yeah, I agree. I really do. I mean, to think that they went twelve months and never had an actual meter read, it's just been an estimate on a new meter for twelve months. Nobody went over and read it. I just don't understand it.
But I, but I, my point is, they've increased the rates substantially.
Yeah.
Maybe they didn't need to, if they were correctly accounting for their revenues.
Possibly.
All right, well, thank you so much for that additional information. That helps me at least understand the, the budget there. Seeing no further questions. Before we adjourn, just a reminder, school committee workshop on Thursday. First policy subcommittee meeting on the years coming up October sixth. And a note to mark your calendars, thank you. A note to mark your calendars for our October fourteenth meeting, we're going to have exec at six PM, not six-thirty, because at six-thirty, we're going to have a voluntary tour of the CTE spaces at the high school, including the new, the newer ones, the bio and the business. I've got the two there, so. So that should be, the public's obviously invited, you know, those will be open tours, right? But we will meet probably at the library, I would think, to start.
Yeah, well, I'll meet, that's a library.
Okay, so, mark your calendar. All good? May I have a motion for adjournment?
So I move second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous? Seven zero, forty-five minutes, almost.